Meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us for the April 20th, 2021 County Commissioner briefing. Let's just look over the agenda for a moment. We're going to have an update on COVID-19 and vaccination efforts. We're going to get an update on the solar farm project, the old landfill, related other planning efforts. We're going to talk about the Black Mountain MOA and public engagement process for federal relief program. Are there any questions about any items on the briefing agenda? Or any additional items folks would like to discuss at the briefing meeting? All right, then we'll consider this the agenda for today's meeting. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our regular meeting at 5:00? Okay, just one item I wanted to maybe just touch on briefly is just the public comment process for the meeting tonight. So we have a lot of folks who've signed up. I think our process during the, while we've been doing the virtual public comment over the last year has been to take public comment for up to one hour. And we've usually had, you know, far less than that. But with the number of folks who've signed up tonight, it would likely, you know, run longer than that. So wanted to get commission feedback on this. You know, my suggestion would be, in light of the number of folks that have signed up, that we ask folks to make their comments within a two-minute period. And that way, we're going to get to more people within the one hour than if we allow everyone to speak for three minutes, then we're, I think there's a lot more people under that scenario who wouldn't get to share their comments with the commission. So I'd like to suggest we ask folks to make their comments within two minutes and that we take comments for up to one hour tonight. But I wanted to get feedback from the commission on that.
Yeah, I like to give people the opportunity to be heard, and that's a good way to get through as many.
Okay, and just for, to make sure we're kind of all thinking about this the same way, we'll take the public comment during the public comment period on all items on the agenda, and then we won't take any additional public comments on any of the specific items because we don't have any hearings or other items that specifically legally require comments on that particular item at that time. So we'll take it all at the beginning, and people can address us on any item on the agenda they want.
And just to clarify for process, for people who don't get in under the allotted hour, is there a way for us to receive content around their comments or any information?
Question.
Mr. Joyner, give me any thoughts on that?
Well, just in reference to the people that signed up, a lot of people already left the commissioners' emails. I've seen a lot of those that have come to everybody, so I've seen duplicate names on there. So we have been letting individuals know that they can make comments directly to the commissioners by email. I can also send out a list of the individuals who all registered for public comment with their comments, but some of them did not state that they were for or against. They just said they wanted to comment on the non-discrimination ordinance, so we have no way of telling what their stance is. But we can provide that information to the board if you'd like me to.
Okay. Is there any way for the folks who have signed up? We don't have emails and stuff like that. Is there any way to let folks know in advance, hey, just so people are aware, we're going to take comments for one hour, and we're going to encourage, we're going to require folks to make their comments within two minutes? So that people have some awareness that, you know, and of course, I'll repeat all this when we get to the meeting so people have some awareness that we can't guarantee every person gets within the hour because sometimes if this many people sign up, it's just not going to.
I think if you make that announcement right before public comment, I think I've already spoke to Max about it, and he said that the individuals will be aware when you make that introduction to public comment on what the parameters are going to be today.
Okay. I think we've got a plan. Thank you very much. The one other question I wanted to just ask just in terms of looking at the schedule for the meeting tonight. We do need to have a closed session, and that needs to be held towards the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Frue, when did the legal counsel get invited to be over here?
I'd like to know about the number, the large number of people signed up for public comment and asked them to come over around 6:00.
Okay, so we will do public comment, then we'll do closed session and hear from the legal counsel. We might be taking action on a legal item following that closed session tonight. Okay, so the one other suggestion I wanted to make is, we do have one proclamation tonight. Could we go ahead and do the proclamation immediately after we do approval of the consent agenda? And in that way, we could do the proclamation and get that taken care of. Then we'll have the long public comment closed session because otherwise that proclamation will just be waiting a long time. Is everyone comfortable with that? So when we approve the agenda tonight, I'll ask that we move that item ahead of public comment. Okay, very good. Then let's move on. Our first staff update at the briefing is on COVID-19 and vaccinations, and Stacy Saunders is here to present this item.
So we'll do our regular COVID update for you all with our vaccine rollout update at the end. And 17,051 confirmed COVID-19 cases have been identified in Buncombe County to date. We have now experienced 313 COVID-related deaths in our community. And currently, we are seeing about 30 new cases. Apologies. 30 new cases per day in our public health workflow. This is a slight uptick from the last three weeks, also as indicated by our new cases per 100,000 per week increasing to 97 this past week, this week. And today, just today, we added about 14 new cases to the workflow, and the new cases per 100,000 for today went to 94. COVID-like illness surveillance, one of our early indicators. One of our early surveillance indicators actually did show an uptick in the week ending April 10th, which was then followed by a slight uptick in those new cases just last week, at the end of last week, where we were seeing closer to 30 cases each day. While the overall EPI curve appears to be relatively flat, there is evidence right at the tail end of just a slight uptick, as I had mentioned. Our percent positivity has remained stable over the last week, ranging from 4.0 to 4.5, the average being 4.2. And this has been stable for now several weeks, three or four weeks now. And today's value is 4.1%. This indicator, as I said, has showed much stability over time. Our regional hospitalization, those continue to remain low and have seen even a decline in the last week. I apologize, this is the COVID-like illness surveillance, and you can see still relatively low, but we did see a slight uptick. I'm sorry, Max, these are the slides from the week before I just noticed. So I'm just going to talk through them then because they're not reflecting actually what I'm saying. I just noticed that with the COVID-like illness, actually, it's showed an uptick in the week. An uptick in the week ending April 10th. And so that's one of our early indicators so that we see those COVID-like illnesses first, and then likely if you did see an uptick in that, it's likely then followed by new cases. And we did see that. Our testing numbers, make sure, because the next, the next one is the metrics that you all like to see, and the metrics monitored weekly continue to. Thank you, Max. There you go. Thank you. So you can see that COVID-like illness just coming up slightly from that very low level the week ending April 10th. And then the percent positivity has remained very stable. Again, the hospitalizations starting to decline even further. And then here are the metrics that we follow each week and report to you, report to you all. The metrics monitored weekly continue to show overall stability. Our new cases per 100,000 per week last Monday was 72, and this past Monday was 97, as indicated, as I previously indicated, and that uptick in new cases. And so you did see that increase. The percent positivity remained well below 5 and remained in that 4 to 4.5 range. Yesterday, it was 4.1 when we pulled the data for the week-to-week. So that actually saw a decline. Our testing numbers did not change significantly from one week to the next, and the deaths remained the same as well. And our local hospitalizations, not the regional data that I just showed you, but the local hospitalization trends have not changed significantly in the last week. As you can see here, it went from about 3% to 2.8, so low and stable. And then the percent ICU beds occupied with COVID-19 is still very stable. And just of note, the percent of ICU beds occupied with COVID-19 is at levels that are so low and stable that the hospital system is no longer routinely updating that data for us, but we'll reinstate that should we start to see that increase. So this will be the third week, I think, of me talking about sort of a flat, a flat landscape, overall favorable indicators. But it's also, you know, I want to say that it's also the third week that I'm cautioning everybody that we are not continuing to decrease. While we are not increasing significantly, that is a very good sign, but we are also not decreasing. And so it's the third week I'm saying I'm concerned about this plateau and that, you know, I want, while it's encouraging for us to maintain that overall stability, I'm concerned with the stagnation that we are seeing in the indicators. And particularly the end of last week, when I saw just the new, the new cases increased just slightly into the 30s. I'm encouraged to see that today it was back down into the teens, but I would like to see that remain. And so I would not want us to experience what other communities are experiencing right now across the nation where they're seeing much higher increases. So I'll soon discuss the vaccine efforts, and I hope each of us will get our vaccine now, that it is open to everyone. And vaccine supply is quite ample now between state and federal vaccine providers. And as we continue to vaccinate, I want to remind everyone that our best chance for our community, for each of us to get back to doing the things that we love, like travel and hugs with families and singing along at our favorite concert venues with our favorite bands and all the other things that we missed in the past year, the best way to do that is to get your shot. We all now have a spot, and there is vaccine supply in many locations within our community. So there is no need to wait. Please get your vaccine today and begin protecting yourself, your loved ones, our community, and our economy. So with that, I just want to remind folks that they can visit the North Carolina DHHS website for vaccine providers, myspot.nc.gov. And as mentioned, everyone 16 years and older is now eligible for vaccine. And just a reminder that those who are 16 and 17, that only Pfizer is the only vaccine at this point that has received EUA for those who are less than 18. And so when you're making your appointment, be sure to check with your provider about what type of vaccine has been given out. I do want to take a moment to highlight again the vaccine efforts of not just our health department, but all the vaccine providers within our region. I showed you all this the last time I was with you. The National MAP shows that vaccine work, it's been a concerted and a collaborative effort between health departments and hospitals and community health centers and pharmacies and many other providers within this region to have us standing out so significantly. And so many thanks for their efforts and yours as supportive leadership of those vaccine So as of yesterday, our state has administered over 6.5 million total doses of vaccine. This translates to over 37% of the population receiving at least one dose of vaccine and just over 27% now receiving their full complete series and being fully vaccinated. This includes all providers, this map that you're seeing here, that's the North Carolina and the federal pharmacy partners all in here. And just to note, there we are, standing out in a dark blue, so very favorable with our vaccine rollout. I also wanted to say here that for the, this is the North Carolina dashboard for vaccine progress and share that Buncombe County as a whole is showing about 43% of people vaccinated with at least one dose of vaccine and 31% of people fully vaccinated with their complete series. So we're making very good progress. For our.
Hey, Stacy, I'm sorry, I have a question. I've heard those numbers of like, they've gotten both or they've gotten one, and it's these percentages. I've always had a little trouble interpreting that. So like, for example, in Buncombe County, where we've had 43% get at least one, and then 31% have gotten fully vaccinated. So what percentage of the population has gotten either one or fully vaccinated? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, so I've had the same question, and my understanding is the language of at least partially vaccinated is inclusive.
Of the.
Of the other group.
So 43% has either gotten, has either gotten one or fully.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And then the other number is just fully.
Right, so you don't add those two together? You just take the bigger number and that's it?
I wish we could add those together and show that we had that much progress, but no, that is my understanding of the use of that as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you are very welcome. And so for our local health department efforts, Buncombe County HHS and our partners at emergency services have administered over 77,660 total doses with roughly 43,200 of those being first doses, 33,000 being second doses, and just under 1,500 being the single-shot doses. So I did want to reintroduce you all to the vaccine demand curve that we've been monitoring. I introduced this the last time I was with you, and as I mentioned last time, we saw a large demand early on when we had very little supply, and we had implemented the waitlist at that time. We saw demand taper until, you know, around March when broader groups were being introduced. And we introduced the online scheduler late last month as we completed the waitlist, and that's that orange line that you're seeing where they kind of, they're overlapping just a little bit. And we've been tracking that as a proxy for demand since finishing the waitlist. And we can, we can clearly see a decline in demand over time, even with the vaccine eligibility opening up to much larger groups. We are not seeing the same surges in appointments that we were seeing early on. And for the last couple of weeks, we've seen about 2,000 appointments uptake per week. Today is a very different day than when we started several weeks ago, and as mentioned, early on, there was very limited supply, very few providers, and a very eager prioritization group of our 75 years and older who wanted vaccine. Today, our landscape looks very, quite different, and we have ample vaccine supply coming through both the North Carolina providers and the federal pharmacy providers. We have many more vaccine providers, not just in our community, but just in the region as a whole. And we are seeing that shift to more of a convenience-driven decision-making. And that brings me to my next slide. So as demand has waned, anecdotally from providers, from partners, and consumers alike, we are noticing a switch from valuing, a switch to valuing that convenience, getting it where I am, when it's convenient for me, being able to just walk in and get it. And as I said, meaning, you know, being able to get it without an appointment and where you are almost like, hey, I'm going to the grocery store, and while I'm there, I may get my vaccine, right? And for these reasons and following that demand data that we've been seeing, the Buncombe County HHS is shifting vaccine operations to better meet that demand and that desire. So first, we're going to be consolidating our two sites into one site. Our drive-through sites have been hugely successful, but they are subject to weather conditions that we can't control, and we have had to cancel those very quickly due to hazardous weather that was coming. And as demand has decreased from our early days, it's time to merge those two operations into a one-stop vaccine shop at AB Tech. And so beginning May 10th, folks will be able to get their first and second doses in the same place, so cut down on some confusion about having to go to a different place for your second dose. And that place will be our AB Tech site on Ferniehurst Drive. Additionally, on beginning April 28th, we are implementing a walk-in availability for folks looking to get their vaccine when it's convenient for them. And so we will continue to offer our online scheduler for those who want to make an appointment and have that confirmation and be able to fast-track them when they come into the AB Tech site. But we'll also accommodate walk-in, walk-in desire during our vaccine business hours, allowing individuals to drop in at their convenience and get their vaccine. And then lastly, the consolidation of the two sites. With that, the needed human resources will be reduced as we go from two to one site, allowing us to build on our successful outreach with additional opportunities, particularly in what I'm calling sort of the small batch approach. So about 100 doses or so for populations that may be at greater risk or have limited access. And these may include and build on some of the work that we've already done with our historically marginalized populations, could be our migrant farm workers and many other populations with that. And I've listed some examples here, including our homeless, our detention center, our migrant farm workers, our historically marginalized populations. And with that, I just want to recognize that this week marks National Volunteer Week, and I want to recognize all the volunteers in our county, in our region, in our state that have been assisting with vaccine operation and throughout the pandemic response, particularly for those dedicated and compassionate volunteers that assist us at our vaccine operations. You know, the vaccine team and I really appreciate the desire to be a part of our work and the commitment that those volunteers are making. And those are medical and non-medical volunteers doing things from helping guide people as they come into the door, decontaminating chairs, and even putting in the shots. And so I just want to say we are delighted to have them be a part of our team and want to thank them for being a part of this historic event. And then to the public, if you have not received your vaccine, please roll up your sleeve and protect yourself and those you love. We had a large uptake, as I mentioned, in vaccine among our 65-year-olds and above across the state, to the tune that statewide, it was 71% of this group being fully vaccinated. And as a result, we have seen a dramatic decline in the new cases among that group. And so proof that vaccines work in stopping the spread. Statewide, we are seeing spread in our younger populations who are unvaccinated. Here in Buncombe, when I pulled the numbers for last week, our average age for our most recent cases is 33 years old. And so please do your part. We can all stop the spread of this virus that has taken so much from all of us. So please help get us back to the things we love. Every arm, every shot is a step toward ending restrictions, ending sickness and death, and ending this pandemic. So please check out buncomeredy.org or myspot.nc.gov to get your vaccine today. There is a vaccine for you, and thank you commissioners for your time and space to share this update.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions from commissioners?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to commend the staff and Health and Human Services and the YMCA and all the partners in the community who worked with the Mexican consulate of Raleigh. I got to visit the site last week, and it was really incredible to see what was happening in there to ensure that our Latinx population did have the opportunity to receive their vaccine. So incredibly well-done job for that particular community. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I'll take that back to our team. It was very successful, and we're able to partner with them for about two weeks, so thank you for that.
I got two questions. The first is, I suppose you knew off the top of your head if and when general practitioner offices might get access to vaccine supply?
So new providers are being added every day. And then what that really means is that if a provider's office is interested, being, going through the CVMS portal and getting approved by the state, and then they become an approved provider and are eligible to get vaccine either through directly for their state or through a transfer from someone else who's already getting it. I think the state has opened that up.
Okay.
Has been working pretty tirelessly on that to get that vaccine out. If you have someone in particular or a group that's in particular who's interested, please reach out to me, and I can help them get to the right person.
Okay, just because mine doesn't have it doesn't mean others don't, so I shouldn't make those assumptions. Okay, thank you. My final question was, I recall Dr. Fauci back in December mentioning, I think he said around 50% he expected, and he was pontificating that to create a downward pressure on caseloads and be a counterweight, I think was the phrase he used. And I'm not asking you to guess what that number might be, but can you tell based on our trends when we might reach that percentage number looking out over the next four weeks in terms of our population?
I appreciate the question, and I don't know that I'll be able to fully answer it for you. I can just use the example of our over 65 population as a really good example for that the more our population gets vaccinated, the more likely we are to see those dramatic declines in new cases within those populations. They've been a really good example of, even before they reached 70% fully vaccinated, we saw dramatic decreases in the new cases amongst that population. And that translated even to a decrease in outbreaks that we were seeing in long-term care facilities as well. And so there, that population in particular is a great testament to, as we continually get more and more folks vaccinated, we are likely to start to see that as you're vaccinated, you are stopping the spread, like you are stopping the spread. And the more folks get vaccinated, the more likely we are to continue to stop that spread.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next up is Jeremiah LaRoy is going to give an update on the Old Landfill Solar Farm project and related solar planning efforts.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
All right. Got quite a bit to get through, so I'm just going to dive right in. I'm here to give you some updates on our project at Woodfin, the solar farm out there, as well as all the rooftop projects we've got going on and some general updates as to where we are with our 100% renewable goal and hopefully spark a little discussion that can help lead us forward. The Woodfin Solar Farm, I know everyone's been waiting for this one for a while. Basically, the short version of where that stands is that everything is finished with the exception of one item. Unfortunately, that one item is very important, and that is the final sort of seal of approval from the Utilities Commission, something called the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. I know at least two of you up there know exactly what that is, but it's basically the final stamp that says, yes, you can build this solar farm. The public staff, the Works for the Utility Commission, had some concerns about the overall cost of building that solar farm on the landfill. So one of the things that we pitched as a potential idea to allay their concerns is altering the lease that we currently have with Duke Energy, our current lease. Duke pays $700 an acre essentially for leasing that space from us, and in return, they sell us the renewable energy certificates very below market. So a penny a rec for the first five years, dollar a rec for the remainder of the term. Well, we pitched an idea to them in the hopes that it would allay some of their concerns because obviously those are very well below market value for those recs, and that did not sit well with the public staff. So we said, well, what if we net out the cost of the lease and the recs and we just call it a wash so that we wouldn't necessarily be spending any money to build the solar farm, but we wouldn't be getting the revenue from that lease either? So we pitched that as a concept. There was a hearing with the Utilities Commission, and we are simply waiting at this point for their thumbs up or thumbs down on that CPCN. So as you can see from the top right corner there, that project is pretty big for us, you know? It gets us a long way towards reaching our renewable energy goal. It's 25% of the goal. So we are very anxiously waiting for that Utilities Commission decision. Unfortunately, it is very much out of our hands at this point. There has been a great deal of public support, a lot of letters written, a lot of folks have There has been a great deal of public support, a lot of letters written, a lot of folks have come to bat for the county, for, you know, various environmental advocacy organizations, and frankly, Duke as well. You know, they're the ones that are going to own and operate the system. But at this point, it's wait and see. So there's really not a whole lot we can do except wait for their decision. So, any particular questions about that issue?
I don't have a question right at the moment, but just maybe just kind of add a few thoughts on this too. So part of the, you know, as Jeremiah said, this issuance by the State Utility Commission of this certificate of public convenience and necessity, which you will all be quizzed on later in this meeting, it's typically a pretty routine procedure, like any kind of energy project, whether it's renewables or natural gas or whatever it might be, has to get issued one of these certificates from the State Utility Commission to be, you know, approved since all that's regulated by that agency. It's usually a pretty typical process. Part of the reason this project's kind of getting looked at is it's sort of going through a different process than most of the other renewable projects around the state in that it is sort of part of this process whereby, you know, a number of years ago, Duke Energy committed to building at least 15 megawatts of solar in the Asheville area as part of a larger agreement around retiring the coal plant and shifting it to gas. There was kind of this, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that went into that agreement, which the Utility Commission approved, but part of it was an agreement to build 15 megawatts of solar in this area, recognizing that with the topography and everything with our area, you know, there's not been as much solar built in this part of the state as down in the flat parts of eastern North Carolina. So, for those reasons, it's getting looked at differently than kind of most of the projects around the state. It's part of that larger agreement, and I think that everyone involved in this project's made a very good case that, hey, Utility Commission, you agreed to do this. This was explicitly part of the arrangement. You know, building a new gas plant was not exactly the most popular idea in Buncombe County, but people felt like it was balanced out with some renewables. So, anyway, I think we have a very good chance of getting this all approved by the Utility Commission. I listened to the meeting where they considered this, and I think the folks from Duke and all the people who, from the county and everywhere, did a great job presenting the why we think this is a good project. And I think pointed out that, you know, Buncombe County's motivation for supporting this project was never that it be a cash generator for Buncombe County. That was never really the point. We want to achieve our renewable energy goals. We want to do it in a way that's responsive to taxpayers, so this was a way to do that. But, you know, just generating lease revenues, that was never really the point. So, I think the concept that the staff are pointing out is a way whereby we can still get this project done, it doesn't cost Buncombe County taxpayers anything, and we meet our goals. Sure, maybe the lease revenues don't add up to a few thousand dollars a year, but again, that's really never why we got in this particular program in the first place. So, for all those reasons, I think it's a sound approach. And just kind of wanted to share some of my thoughts on kind of the context for where this is getting reviewed by the state.
No, I appreciate that, and I agree wholeheartedly that our goal was never to draw revenue from this project. It's to help us, you know, install renewable energy in our community, you know? And so, I think it's got a good chance of passing as well. But again, at this point, we're just, we'll wait and see, and hopefully we get some good news pretty soon. Outside of that, it is absolutely ready to go. So Duke is chomping at the bit to start constructing this thing. So, we're excited about it.
And probably pretty soon, I mean, I think their Utility Commission hearing was before the holidays or right after. I can't remember exactly. It's been a few months, so hopefully they're pretty close to issuing that decision. Don't anybody here tell the Utility Commission this, but it will probably actually still, you know, from a county standpoint, you know, this is a big multimillion-dollar investment in the system. And so, you know, this will all be, it'll be new property tax base in the county. So, end of the day, actually, there are still some good economics for the community for having this built in addition to the clean energy benefits that will accrue.
Yep, absolutely.
Anyway.
Yeah, and just as an FYI, if they do approve that sort of alternative lease arrangement, I will have to come back before you all to get that officially approved. So, cross my fingers, that's what I'll be here doing in the not-too-distant future. So, okay. So, Phase 1 rooftop solar. We've got 39 solar projects contracted at this time, 14 of them are on county facilities. The total contract we initially signed was for $10.2 million. There have been some increased costs specifically related to the panels themselves. In the time that we bid the contract out and were able to get the contract signed, the panels that we spect were no longer available. And I've been learning, frankly, the hard way recently, that that's a very common occurrence because we went through three separate versions of panels, and each time we said, okay, those are good, and they're already gone, and those are good, and they're already gone. So they were selling out very quickly. So once we found some that worked, we just said, yes, please. And so, that was at an increased cost of $216,000 total for the project. It's about a 2% increase total. Most of these projects are in the Duke Interconnection queue, which the interconnection application process is exactly as exciting as it sounds. But, you know, we're basically working through Duke approval. That's what that really is, is Duke approving us to connect these systems to the grid, essentially. We are meeting with them every single week to go through each individual project and its status, trying to expedite this process as much as possible, but it's a 3- to 6-month process for every single project. So it's just moving as quickly as we can. And actually, through that process, we found out that their connection portal was broken and that everything we were sending them, they weren't receiving. So that was another thing that sort of ended up dragging our feet on a little bit, but we feel like we're in a good place now. We should have projects ready to go. Early June is the construction start date for our first bundle of projects. And actually, I just so happened to have a really good connection at Asheville High, and we were considering doing a groundbreaking ceremony of sorts there. So keep that on your calendars if we could. We're going to nail that down as soon as we can. Also important is that rebate applications have been submitted for these projects as well. So obviously, very important for us, you know, makes it that much more cost-effective and economical if we can get those rebates. And rebates are a get-in-line, and once you're in line, you're good to go. And so, we've went ahead and done as many rebate applications as we can for those projects. The total rebates for all projects, if we were to receive all of them, was a little over $2 million. So, you know, certainly is something we want to take advantage of if we can. And again, top right corner, you can see that the projects we've got on county facilities, approximately 6% of our 100% renewable goal. Any questions? Okay. So, 100% renewable goal, speaking of. Our county operations goal is 100% renewable by 2030 currently. That 20 megawatts that we say we need to reach our goal, just as a, you know, it's really important to know that that's a bit of a moving target. And part of the reason for that is obviously, energy consumption's a moving target in general, but things like the facility study could have a significant impact. If we choose to get rid of a couple of the buildings in our portfolio, then we'll inch our way towards that goal a little faster. If we choose to build more, then, you know, obviously, then we'll have more renewable energy we have to get to reach 100%. So, while we have that 20-megawatt goal as a ballpark for where we need to be today, you know, obviously, some of the decisions that we'll make as a county can affect whether or not that goal sort of raises or lowers. But to give you an idea of where we're at today, we've got the Woodfin Solar Farm and all of our rooftops, and then we've got a couple of projects in the CIP for this coming year as well. Gets us to about 32%. So, maybe that's not 100, but it's a pretty good number considering we've only had it for a few years. And, you know, it really shows, I think, the community that we're putting our money where our mouth is and making progress towards this goal. Future rooftop opportunities, I won't go through each individual one here, but I did, I guess, want to show you essentially this green-yellow-red in terms of viable opportunities we have in the near future. And really, the point of this particular slide is to let you know that rooftops alone are just not going to get us there, right? That's just not how it's going to work for us. We've got about 16 projects currently in the hopper for us. That's going to, you know, obviously, do a lot for us, but there's not a whole lot of projects left that are really good viable projects on roof space. So, I can go through any of these if you like, but it was just sort of a, you know, quick overview. There are some buildings that make sense. There are some that need new roofs, and maybe then they'll make sense. That's sort of, you look like you have a question. Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm just trying to sort this
Absolutely.
in the calendar inside my head. You showed us Phase 1, the 16 projects. Is that kind of Phase 2 in your mind?
Yes.
And that's not this list? This is a different list?
Oh, the 16 projects are, well, 14 of them are in the Phase 1 projects. We have two more that are in the CIP for '22.
Right.
And then, these would be in subsequent years, probably '23, '24, et cetera.
These?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Depending on, again, some of the maintenance scheduling as well in terms of, well, when do we do for a new roof? For example, that Inca Library has 10 years left on the warranty, so it's not great to necessarily put solar on something that's going to need a new roof in 10 years when you've got a 30-year asset on it. So, you know, depending on when we can get those on the schedule for roof replacements, you know, that sort of thing. So, there are definitely some opportunities more, you know, in the more near term, but we also need to space some of them out because there's just some maintenance that needs to happen on some of these buildings.
Thank you.
So, in saying that rooftops alone can't get us there, we're very much always seeking out additional utility scale opportunities. So we've got the Woodfin project, and as you saw, that 25% gets us a long way. And so, we're looking for other opportunities of that same nature, right? We've got our eyes on one particular site out at Mills River that is actually city-owned property, working in collaboration with the city. That's out at the water treatment facility out in Mills River. And that's the one on the left there. And we're actually working with our GIS team as well to identify as many potential opportunities as we can, not just in Buncombe County, but in potentially surrounding counties as well. There is a lot of sifting through parcel data, which is, again, one of those very exciting things we get to do in our spare time. But, you know, we're really just trying to get every opportunity we can to determine whether or not we have parcels that make sense or a similar type of project. So, you know, if we can get even one additional similar project to what we've got going at Woodfin, it goes a really long way. So, do you have any particular questions about utility scale? I know I've got a couple of utility scale folks in the room, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that. Okay.
I don't have any questions, but appreciate you sharing information about this. I mean, I think that it's, I think you're right. You know, the rooftop won't be enough to get us to our goal, so we're going to need a mixture of these kind of, you know, solar farms and rooftop onsite use. So that'll make sense. And, you know, I just think that it's one of these things where, like, we've seen the Woodfin project, right? We've been working on it for three years or more, I can't remember. But these projects take a long time to plan, longer than they should.
Yes.
One of the things as a state and a country we're going to have to get better at is doing these things faster because it shouldn't take three years to plan, frankly, a fairly small-scale solar farm tied into, you know, three-phase power lines that run down the street. That should be, in other countries, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't take that long, and it shouldn't take that long, but it's the system that exists today. So, looking at these other kind of projects is going to be important, and my experience is that they're all challenging, and they all have issues that seem impossible to resolve. And some of them don't ever get resolved, you know? And so they don't all work, but you've got to be working on them, planning on them, planning them, and then many of them do work out. So I'm glad we're looking at that, and it's, I know it's kind of new territory in a way, but it's going to be, as we think about shifting to transition into renewable energy, it's just part of the work that we're going to be kind of living into more. You know, a lot of cities and counties, well, mostly cities, you know, but, you know, run their own electric utilities. There's municipal electric, you know, systems, and there's rural cooperatives. So it's kind of new to Buncombe County in some ways, but I'm glad we're starting to wade into, like, how would these opportunities potentially work in our part of the world?
Yeah, absolutely. This is just another sort of visual representation of how we're trying to get to our goal. And again, I think this is really meant to sort of point out how important those sizable projects could potentially be in getting us there. Now, utility scale solar is obviously sort of our first priority. Again, the Woodfin project is just such a great example of, you know, local government and community and utility all working together. And so, we're always looking for more opportunities like that. But there are also, you know, alternative options for getting us to that goal, and some of those alternative options would be things like leasing roof space. It's not a particularly common thing, and part of the reason why it's not common is that if you're going to lease a roof, you know, let's say a large commercial or industrial customer, you know, you need 100,000 square feet to get about 1 megawatt of, you know, solar. But it's mostly because the economics of it are not as great as net metered systems. So a sell-all system is what these would have to be. And what that means is, instead of powering the building itself that it's connected to, it would actually just plug right into the grid and power and send power directly to Duke Energy, right? So Duke Energy sells you, or will buy that power at a very, very low rate. And so, you know, just I gave, just a quick example of like a similar-sized system, one that's net metered versus one that's sell-all, the payback on it being 12 years versus almost 30, right? So, the economics aren't as good, but at the same time, it was something that I think was a lot more common when the sell-all rates were significantly higher. So, but that is one option. Another option is alternative procurement, right? So, third-party PPAs are not allowed in North Carolina, but Duke Energy offers programs like Green Source Advantage. Local government staff all over the state meet with Duke Energy, actually, every Monday afternoon, to work on figuring out ways to make this type of program better and more applicable to us because it's not a great program the way it's currently constructed. It's very expensive, and it's really, there's only two local governments in the state of North Carolina, the City of Charlotte and Durham, that have actually opted into this program. But the way it basically works is that the county would negotiate with a large-scale solar developer, and then that solar developer would negotiate with Duke, and we would essentially own the recs, receive bill credits for the amount of energy we purchase, but it's very important to know that it's a premium product, you know? So we'd be paying administrative fees to Duke as well as whatever the product fee ends up being that we're trying to negotiate. So, it is something that more local governments are looking into that have, you know, 100% renewable goals, like what are these alternative procurement methods of buying renewable energy without having to, you know, have it installed locally or on your own roof? And so, it's just one other option to explore, and that we're always trying to keep our eyes open and our mind open as to, you know, how we can reach these pretty ambitious goals that we have. So, and that is it for me. I am happy to answer any additional questions you all have.
I don't have any other questions right now. I guess just one other comment, I appreciate the updates on all this. You know, and at one of our recent meetings, a couple meetings ago, we talked about, you know, the different areas of policy work and project work in the county where we might want to have different, either subcommittees or working groups and things like that. And this was one of those areas, you know, energy, maybe energy and environment are related, you know, a kind of related energy or, you know, environmental or conservation-related types of topics. So, I do think that that's an important thing for us to move forward on. I think that, so anyway, I just, I wanted to kind of speak up for that. I think that it's, we should, we should kind of talk further as a commission about that piece, and I'm certainly, I certainly think having a working group to work on these energy issues is important in between these kind of larger commission discussions. And then, what are the other kinds of issues that might, like in terms of environmental or conservation issues, that we might want to have that subcommittee also potentially work on as well? So, anyway, I just wanted to say, I think we should get that up and running because these are important goals, and it's, you know, it's a lot of like new territory for us to work in. So in some ways, I think it's probably the kind of arena where a subcommittee can be most helpful because it's not just doing something that the county's been doing for 50 years and is, you know, just in a complete groove. And it's kind of one of these things where we, as a society, are trying to figure out, right? So, anyway, I wanted to just kind of speak up for that, and so, I might request that we put that on the, maybe even our next agenda for a follow-up or detailed discussion about moving that ahead. Avril, do you have any thoughts on that?
I do. And we had started studying it, and we didn't get clear direction, so we kind of put that on the back burner. We were thinking early childhood and expanding that. But we are absolutely ready to go think, take a look at what that will look like.
Yeah.
I hesitated because you said the next meeting, so maybe it might be the second meeting after that, but we can come back in May, probably.
Yeah.
Get you something.
And if it's not the next meeting, that's, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying it needs to be the next meeting.
Okay.
And, you know, and I'll just kind of just, while we're on the topic, the one other thing I would just say out loud is that, you know, we work on affordable housing and had a great meeting today on early childhood education, working hard. The one thing, or maybe two things, that I do think we, as we look at the subcommittee idea, that I think are important to figure out some solutions to are, one, if it is possible to coordinate with the, you know, a lot of stuff we can just do on our own. I do think there's important coordination opportunities with Asheville, so I think we need to have some mechanism or space, or maybe it's just a periodic joint meeting or something like that that we schedule. But I think that one of the biggest opportunities is for the county to not just work on our own own buildings, but to kind of provide leadership in helping other public sector organizations in our area also move in this direction as well. I mean, the last RFP we did, the, all the projects we're doing on county buildings are great, but really the biggest accomplishment was helping the schools and the community college get in the game too. And that wouldn't have happened without the county's kind of leadership and resources on that. So I, I see this as much a kind of around convening other public sector partners as well. So as we look at the committee idea, think about how to do that. The other thing is that, you know, in the spirit of kind of creating a structure to have more communication and working to move these things ahead, you know, one of the limitations of when we only have committees of three commission members is that those members can't actually talk to each other between meetings because people talking to each other becomes a quorum and it becomes a public meeting. So in some ways, it kind of actually ties our hands in terms of being able to spend more time kind of working on, on how to advance these goals. So it might mean that we need to have a couple, you know, maybe some number of residents on it or staff, but in some way, we need to, we need two people to be able to talk to each other between meetings because that's, that would actually be a step backwards in some way. So I'll just share those thoughts as well. And any other questions or comments while we're on this item? All right. Jeremiah, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
All right. Next up is a discussion of the Black Mountain MOA, and Matt Stone will present this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mine will be a brief discussion on updates, proposed changes to the inter-local agreement with Black Mountain to perform their building inspections. It was last updated in 2018. We perform inspections with Black Mountain on an as-needed basis. That's typically when their inspector is on vacation or doing continuing education, things of that nature. We average 22 inspections a year. That number almost doubled last year due to COVID. We did find out that, and that's one of the reasons we're readdressing this, is that their inspector is retiring at the end of this month, so we know we're going to see a much higher volume than normal. They do have some staff that can perform some regular residential-type inspections and they will do those. They are asking us to pick up the other areas in which they don't have the certifications and the staff to do that. So that would be the majority of what we're addressing. Under this updated agreement, we would, based on our current fee schedule, increase the per inspection or per-trip fee from $40 to $80. Now that is on inspections that the town has already issued their own permits. Those are not permits we have issued. So when they have a particular, let's say, a commercial project that would exceed what their staff can permit and inspect, we would issue the permit, apply our applicable permit fees, not a per-trip fee, and perform those inspections into completion. And also included, just an excerpt from the inter-local agreement, this basically outlines the type of inspections they are asking us to perform, the timeline in which they would like us to perform them, and then it outlines the responsibilities of both the county from a billing standpoint and the town of Black Mountain from a payment standpoint in how we would resolve those when, on a monthly basis. And that is brief, but that is it, and I'll be glad to address any questions that you have.
I don't see any right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And the last item on this agenda is a discussion about public engagement process for federal relief programs. And we've got several folks who are going to help us on this, I think Rachel Nygaard and maybe Tim Love and Don Warren are going to tag team this one.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Tim and Don are here as needed to help with questions if anything comes up, but I'll carry the presentation. I'm Rachel Nygaard, Strategic Partnerships Director. Our topic is local fiscal recovery funds, which is a subset of the American Rescue Plan. The slide that you see is busy. It's got a lot of information in it, but we wanted to include this information because it really helps give that overall context. This is from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, from some information they shared with North Carolina counties recently. And what it conveys is the breadth and the depth of the overall American Rescue Plan. So we know that funding will be coming to our community to support things like education and individual emergency assistance, economic impacts for businesses, business, small business relief for homelessness. And so keeping that in our minds as, is a background as we set priorities and ultimately establish a spending plan for the local fiscal recovery funds will be important so that we can maximize funding sources and match projects to the best funding source to the extent possible. So as a reminder, Buncombe County is going to receive an allocation. The estimated amount is between $50 and $51 million for this recovery fund to be used before December 31st, 2024. You can tell from that timeline, from the name, and also from the eligible uses articulated in the bill, that the intent here is recovery in a way that previous funding for COVID or coronavirus has been more specific around response. So this is around a longer-term recovery for the community, both from COVID and from its negative economic impacts. We've notified you before and we are in the same position awaiting guidance from the United States Treasury. We have heard from the federal government about certifications that are required to get the funding in-house. We expect the first half of that funding, the first of two tranches, to come by around mid-May. We've done everything that's needed in terms of those certifications, which are pretty basic, making sure we're updated on our system for award management, that kind of thing. So this guidance, which municipalities and states and counties across the nation are awaiting, will provide clarification around how exactly these funds can be used. In some cases, it will be areas where the bill was silent, areas where we need more clarification, definition around capital and broadband. So we proceed, not knowing exactly what that guidance will contain, based on what we know at this point. The process in front of you, the first box on the left represents the conversation that we had in the month of March with the Board of Commissioners, when you all came and brought to the conversation some ideas about priorities and projects, how these funds might be able to be used in alignment with our strategic plan priorities and other priorities like budget priorities. We are coming today to update you about the public engagement process, which is slated for April and May. So we're kicking that off and we'll give you some more detail about that shortly. Once we gather that input, presumably we'll also have the guidance. We'll take that input, take that guidance, and take the information that we're learning by researching all of those other provisions of the American Rescue Plan to propose some areas, some priorities within the, of use of the funds, which will help us create a solicitation. Our departments and our community partners are eager to give us information about their project ideas. We're not ready to receive those, but at some point, we're looking at around June or July, we hope to be ready to do that through like a grant or RFP-style process where we communicate the priorities, solicit the projects and gather information that we can use then to evaluate those priority, those projects based on the priorities that you'll see in a second. Still looking to establish that spending plan and launch, launch early projects by the early FY '22. Here are principles that we have discussed before. Alignment to strategic plan priorities is critical. That's the guiding document for Buncombe County, both on the community focus area side as well as foundational projects. We would seek to strike a balance between outward-facing community projects, focusing on those areas like education and environment and economy and well-being, as well as foundational projects to make sure that Buncombe County's facilities and staff and resources are in a strong position to deliver the services that we need. A strong focus on equity, specifically thinking about equitable outcomes for people who are most impacted and thinking about what an equitable recovery from COVID-19 can look like and building that in to the funding priorities. Coordinating with other governments, could be jurisdictions, I mean, the towns or the city within Buncombe County. It could be coordinating with regional partners or even with the state. It was also in receipt of some funds from the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds, and they're going through, each of those entities is kind of going through their own process about how to prioritize and deploy those funds. We want to prioritize one-time expenditures because these are time-limited funds that expire in 2024. This is a snapshot of the priorities that we heard from you last time we met. Just letting you know, we listen to the ideas that you put forward. We sorted them with one another and we organized them into the community focus areas. We are not reflecting foundational items here. These are the community focus areas. And the reason we've included it for you is this will be the basis of going out for community input. So our next steps are to gauge the sentiment at the community level and at the employee level. We have ready-to-go tomorrow articles and surveys for both the community, people in the public at large, as well as the workforce of Buncombe County, to weigh in, to look at those priorities that have been articulated and say what is most important from their perspective, help us narrow that list down, and are there other items that should be considered, added to the list? We will gather that survey through May 14th. We'll assess those survey inputs together with that treasury guidance, look at other funding sources, recommend fund priorities, and then ultimately put that process, create, put a process in place to solicit project-level ideas so that they can be evaluated. Chair and commissioners, that's all that I am bringing forward today. Open to answering any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
Thank you, Rachel. Did you say that the surveys are going to be going out this week?
Yes, they're ready to go. Wanted to wait until we updated the commissioners to make sure that there weren't any concerns with that direction, but we'll be ready to go tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure that you've got it so you can share with your constituents.
And the, the guidance or clarity, or whatever word we're using, is, is coming straight from the Treasury Department, is that?
That's right. We have other groups that help us interpret, like NACO, the National Association of Counties, but the guidance we're waiting on is intended to come straight from U.S. Treasury. They have created an office, and I don't recall the specific name of the office, but they have this dedicated to pandemic response. So they're putting the structures in place to be able to release that.
Okay. Well, yeah, that just leads me to, you know, none of us having done this before, at least I've never done this before, like, would there be a back-and-forth communication with that, that office if we don't have the clarity we need, I guess is my question.
One of the nice things about NACO is that we have a voice at the table. They are able to share with us the intent behind some of the languages and provisions in the legislation. So I would assume that we would get together with our associations within the state and across the country to, to put forward questions as we have them.
And another question, and you may have no idea of this one yet, but how long, do you have any sense of when we'll start to solicit proposals? Just any in general idea? Because as you can imagine, we're getting lots of ideas.
Yep. Our best guess at this point is June, July.
Thank you.
Is that what it said on the timeline? I think it did.
That's when, that's when we would solicit proposals? Like, we've kind of gone through and gotten general ideas and then we say, okay, the commission says, yeah, we, we want to allocate, we've gotten guidance. So then we say, yeah, we do want to allocate, you know, 5% of our funds towards this area. Then we might go out and solicit proposals to kind of like program that kind of funding or something like that? Am I thinking about it in a similar way?
Right. It's, it's hard for community members with great ideas for projects that they think might be a great fit to wait when we have
I'm sure.
When we're uncertain exactly what the timelines look like. So moving ahead at the priority level felt, felt like something we were really confident to do now and that by mid-May, we can look at what those priorities are and hopefully by June be ready to begin soliciting projects. But it's all been a pretty evolving situation, so in a way, that's our best guess.
And commissioners, it's really contingent on when we do receive that guidance. Our hope is to receive guidance by mid-May, so by, within two weeks or so, which is the beginning of June, we should be able to issue proposals. But if we don't get guidance until the end of May, it will be a couple of weeks after that. So it really is contingent on that guidance.
Right. And, and right now, in terms of the solicitations, I mean, some people might come in and say, hey, I really think you should fund Greenways. And some people might come in and say, I think you should fund like this particular project and here's how it would work. So it'll be both sort of general ideas as well as, like, there's this project in this part of the county that people want to advocate for. It'll be a mix of those kind of specific and general feedback.
Yep. So the survey will give people a way to select the priority category. Greenways is, is reflected. That was one of the ideas that had come out, so they'll want to make sure they choose that item if it's one that's really important to them. And then there's an open box about other ideas that, that weren't specifically included. So if somebody's got something very specific that they'd like to make sure gets added, that survey is going to be our formal mechanism to be heard. Of course, people are regularly contacting their staff contacts and their commissioner contacts to share their ideas as well, but to the extent that we can, we're trying to steer everything to this process.
Okay. And in terms of commissioner input on it, Avril, do you want, I mean, what's the best way commissioners have ideas or we're hearing something from constituents? And we can encourage people to do the surveys, right? That's, are, are you and Rachel kind of the two staff people who, like, ideas could be funneled to?
Thank you. The plan would be, yes, they can send them to Rachel or myself. I would prefer them to go ahead and send them to Rachel so we can just collect them. The goal would be, well, we, once we have the scoring criteria, we want them to target and write their proposal so we can score them. So we don't want them to really send them in before they can see that criteria. It would be helpful for them to really write their proposal based on getting the most score.
And when will the criteria be?
Well, we can't release it until we have guidance specifically. So, so they are sending us proposals now, we are getting proposals now, and we would hope that when we get those, we can hold those. And then when, once we put the RFP out, we'll send that back to them and said, hey, would you structure your proposal based on this? So basically, they're doing double work right now.
We're, we're keeping a contact list of, of folks that have reached out to us that want to, that want to make sure to be on our distribution whenever we communicate about this. And we are holding on to what people submit to us at this point and really just setting it aside.
Right. Other questions? All right. I mean, I'll just, one other comment is, like, so we had our Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting today. Obviously, that's an area where we don't have guidance on what's permissible. There's some things we are, you know, pretty hopeful will be fundable, like homelessness specific work, which is kind of spelled out as an explicit goal. Our hope is that it comes back very flexible and like affordable housing more generally is a permissible use of funds, in which case, a lot of specific projects that.
And I believe there's separate money also for homeless services as well.
Yeah. So, so anyway, I was just going to make that comment that like, you know, we're definitely, like, one of that, one that committee of the commission's interested in this guidance and stuff too, and how that might make different projects eligible. On, on the point you just made, Avril, that there's other funding out there too. So, so like, there's the infrastructure funding, but that's a future legislative initiative, so we don't know how that'll play out or it may not even happen at all, you know? What's the best way if we want to get more information on some of the other pieces like, like homelessness, like we, you know, I think we're aware of several really good projects that are out there that proposals have already been made to the county to, to play a financial role in supporting, but if there's other funds out there potentially for projects that, you know... that, you know, other than just the county or the city, how do we learn more about like what those other avenues are? Is it just good to just kind of, if we have questions, just bring them to you about?
Always good to.
Are we the only opportunity in town or is there separate relief funding potentially that might be earmarked for those kind of projects?
Always good to reach out if you have got a topic on your mind. What I would say is that we're using this time to do research and gather that information and a lot of that is working with our partners. So in the case of what funding is out there in the already-approved bill for small business, we've got our economic development representative, Tim Love, who works with the Workforce Development Group and with the Economic Development Coalition to really, in our, in our nonprofit partners, to kind of pour through and, and figure out what, what the, what that's, what that can fund. Same thing is playing out on education. Our local education, the LEAs, I think it's Local Education Authority, the school districts, will be in receipt of significant amounts of funds as well. Some of their funds are very specific on what they can be used for, safety and Wi-Fi, and some of it is open-ended, like enrichment for students and social, emotional learning and terms like that. So they too are going through the process of deciding what can be funded with each of their funding sources, specifically to homeless. We have a staff point of contact within Health and Human Services that's, that kind of is point on staffing homelessness, so I can connect you in that direction. And then there's a committee, the Asheville-Buncombe Homeless Advisory Initiative or something like that. There's a, there's a city-county commission that looks at utilizing funds. And so HUD, the Housing of, Housing and Urban Development Authority, will pass funds to our local entity that manages those funds, which is the city of Asheville. So lots of moving pieces all going on at once and maximizing each of those funding sources and best matching each project to the right funding source is critical.
Great. All right. Thank you all so very much. I won't see any other questions for now, so thanks for the updates.
Thank you.
All right, Commission, we've gotten through all of the items on our agenda for the briefing meeting, so let's adjourn and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for our regular meeting.